All right, everybody. We are ready to go. All right. All right, team, are we good? Oh, who is, am I doing, or you're doing roll call? You're doing roll call, okay. All right, everybody, it is 2:05 PM on this Tuesday, August 27th, 2024, regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And today, JJ, would you mind doing item 1.02 roll call?
Trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Rodriguez is absent. Trustee Westlake. Trustee Woodley. President Smith. Student Representative Annie Batavia. You have a quorum.
Well, thank you so much. I guess that's a really good point to now clarify. Is it Batavia or Batavia? Batavia, okay, like New York. Well, while we're on the topic of you, let's roll right into item 1.03. So for those who may have noticed, we have a wonderful new face with us, and that is our new student trustee, Annie Batavia. And before we go to the pledge, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Annie. So one of the things I'm really proud of about our school district, well before we were all trustees here, was that we are one of the only boards here in the state of Nevada that has a student trustee. And the reason why we have a student trustee is because you, Annie, and all the trustees, the student trustees before you, bring a certain knowledge and insight and accuracy to what's happening in your school day. And so we're so very grateful to have you. So Annie is the captain of her golf team at her school. She is a senior at McQueen High School. She has two younger sisters, and her family and her sisters push her to be better every day, and she enjoys them so much. She's also the student body president, and we are incredibly honored to have you sit with us and help guide the decisions that we make for you and all of the children here in our district. So Annie, would you please lead us in the pledge? All right. And now I will move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washoe, Nukmu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. And that closes Section 1 in its entirety and moves us on now to Section 2, our consent agenda items. And for today's consent agenda, we have items 2.02 to 2.19. And I was wondering if there are any trustees that would want to pull any of those items.
I have nothing to pull, I just want to comment on 2.19.
Okay, very good. We'll see no other lights on before we go to public comment. Trustee Church, feel free to take it away.
Thank you very much. 2.019 is a consent agenda item for applications for the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, listing Christopher Smith as the finalist. I requested and received the name, correction, the applications redacted of the other applicants. Having reviewed those, I'm prepared to not pull this and to go ahead and support the application. But I want to put on the record that in the future, it is my opinion that we should be given the names of the applicants because they are not deliberative in nature and that that's consistent with open meeting law, the AG's current manual, page 17, and OMO decision 2009-02. So I do want to put on the record that I think we should get the names, including the public, getting the names of all the applicants. But that said, I did receive the redacted applications, and I'm okay going ahead with this without pulling it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Church. JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.19?
I have no cards for consent.
All right, I see dueling lights on. I'll go to my vice president.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead and move to approve the consent item, items 2.02 through 2.19. A second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, seconded by Trustee Woodley. I see no lights on for the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we will move on to Section 3. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we welcome first item 3.01. This is a presentation and discussion to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of Washoe County School District's two-way and dual-language programming. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we have in front of us our Associate Chief of Specialized Instruction, Jennifer Van Tress, and our Director of English Language Development, Megan Wa. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. I am Jennifer Van Tress. I'm the Associate Chief of Specialized Instruction. And with me today, I have Megan Wa, who is our Director of the Department of English Language Development. And then in the audience who will be joining us soon, I have Dr. Mike Paul, Associate Chief for Elementary. I have Ms. Chrissy Brown, the Principal of Mount Rose School of Languages, and our amazing student, Ms. Eva Garcia, from Mount Rose School of Language as well. They'll be joining us during our presentation.
Okay, good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and trustees. I am Megan Wa, Director of the Department of English Language Development, for the record. And this slide just provides a little bit of context behind a dual-language or two-way immersion programming model. So as it implies in the name, it is a program that uses two languages that we teach in. Typically, it's English with, along with a partner language, which in Washoe County School District for our schools, that is Spanish. Dual-language or two-way immersion is a language instruction educational program model, meaning that the origin behind it is for English acquisition. So for students who are learning English as a second language. As I described, it does combine students who are native English speakers as well as students who are native to the partner language, in our case, Spanish. And most models should include an equal number of native English speakers with English language learners. So in Washoe County School District, we do have two schools currently who have had a dual-language or two-way immersion programs in them for quite some time. Jesse Beck Elementary is a K-5 school. They utilize a model which we call 50/50, which is 50% of the content in their classrooms is taught in English and 50% is taught in Spanish. One unique feature of our Jesse Beck Elementary School is that they do have a very robust parental organization. They call that their Dual Language Action Committee. They are amazing advocates for their program. And Jesse Beck was our actual, our first school that started a dual-language program in 2008 and 2009 with Principal Brown. The other school is Mount Rose School of Languages. This is a K-8 model, so our first middle school to adopt a dual-language program. Mount Rose utilizes what we call a 90/10 model. So they start in kindergarten with 90% of the content being taught in Spanish or the partner language, and then they slowly increase the English content and decrease the Spanish until they reach about 50/50, which is what the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades have. Very unique to Mount Rose is that their eighth graders actually take the AP Spanish classes, which provides the seal of biliteracy as well as some college credits. And Mount Rose's program began in the 2009-2010 school year.
So on that, I'm going to jump in. All right, Principal Brown, just so you know, I'm going to give you a little bit of warning because you never toot your own horn. So when you come up, I do want you to share your story about how this all happened because I know you probably wouldn't offer that yourself, but you've played a really big role in our school district achieving what we have now. My question for right now is, can you explain a little bit more about what that 50/50 model looks like? Does that look like one day social studies is in English and one day it's in Spanish? Or does it look like the same curriculum day being taught both ways? Can you, can you expand on that so people following along? Or even me, I've never been in a 50/50 classroom like this. Can you help us understand what that looks like?
Yes, so that is every day. So for example, in kindergarten, the language arts at Jesse Beck, the language arts and the social studies is taught in English. And then the, sorry, I have to look at my notes, the science, math, and then the Spanish language arts is taught in Spanish. So that's every day. So students get both all day long. And then in first grade, they increase to, they go back to math being taught or their number corner in their math program being taught in English along with social studies and ELA. And then they maintain a Spanish language arts program as well as more math, additional math, and science. So you can see that they just balance each school, each year they progress, but it stays about 50/50. Half of the day is taught in English and half of the day is taught in Spanish.
And I promise these will all make sense when I get to where I'm going in a little bit, which is also why it's so important that when cohorts come in, by all means, a student can come in partway through in second grade, join the program if there's space and availability. But what you're talking about with the advancement of the program year to year, it's also one of the reasons why when you look at the linearness of the cohort starting together in kindergarten and then finishing up through their programs, they get that year difference from there. Yeah, okay.
Yes, absolutely, in both models. That's very important.
Our next slide. We get feedback. On this slide, we just wanted to touch base on a little bit of our data regarding our dual-language and two-way immersion programs. This data is actually based on the 23-24 school year just to give you guys a point of reference. So at Jesse Beck, we have 112 students participating in the program, which is about 25% of the overall school enrollment. At Mount Rose School of Languages, in the elementary side, bless you. So remember that the, for Mount Rose, we have an elementary side and we have the middle school side. On the elementary side, we have just over 50% participating in the, in the program. And then 100% of the middle school students are participating in the, the program. The, below that, you'll see the program enrollment. So just to kind of make some points of clarification, 24% are what we call ever English language learners. So those are students that have typically come in not speaking English or have minimal English. Those are our Spanish-speaking students. And our not English language learners are the 75%. So those are the students that have, have the experience with the language, with English, and are coming into. and are coming into, to model back and forth with, with the Spanish and the English. Overall, our, both elementary schools had a 73% passing rate in ELA on the SBA, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, and in math was a 62%. And those were well above district averages of 29% for ELA and 22% for math. The elementary access AGP, so this means that our English language learners are getting, are increasing their proficiency in English. Overall, we had a 61% growth in their access, their understanding and use of English, which was an 11% increase over the 22-23 school year and a 21% above the district average on our access assessments.
We're going to stay there for a minute. So what this slide shows me, for the families and the students, where a program like this works for them. Because this is not something that all families or that all students would work with. But for the students in these programs, whether they be a student who is not a native English speaker or a native English speaker that's acquiring Spanish, I'm seeing performance that is markedly higher in almost all categories. So there is clearly, I mean, jump in here, there is clearly something that for the students and parents who choose it, this is working for them.
Correct. The data definitely shows that we have some successes with these, with the programs at Beck and Mount Rose.
And I know that we don't want to get too specific, but one of the questions that I had asked in the trustee questions was a little bit of, I don't know if it's graduated or the proficiency, but among the ever, ever English language learners, they're also performing very well in graduating out or demonstrating, demonstrating the acquisition of the English language in addition to what we have here with the AGP, right?
Well, that's, that's what the AGP measures. Yeah, is exactly what you just described.
Very good.
So that's showing that they are improving on their English learning.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have some opportunities for support and even some expansion, which is really exciting for our school district. So first of all, for support, as you are aware, we were able to do some restructuring of our ELD department, which included the addition of four English language coordinators and 35 English language facilitators, which are onsite coaches. With that, some of those amazing English language facilitators and coordinators are working directly with both schools. And the ones who do work directly with both schools have extensive history in dual-language programs. For several years now, our district has been able to offer the opportunity for our teachers to earn what we call their ELAD or English Language Endorsements, which they would need to hold in order to be an EL teacher. We have now expanded that to where we are able to offer an actual bilingual endorsement cohort. And the bilingual endorsement is what's required to teach in an actual dual-language instructional program. So that's very exciting. So we are able to do that. We provide different levels of professional learning, including conference attendance. We have some amazing Mount Rose staff members who will be speaking at a national conference this fall. We provide the curriculum that they need in Spanish, so that our students continually have access to that. The AAPPL assessment is the assessment that students take in high school to gain their seal of bilinguism. And it's also part of our continual AP Spanish assessment programs. And because we know that language needs to be captured at the very earliest levels or years in school, we are starting to have a focus on our pre-K programs and really looking at different ways of language acquisition and supporting the L1 or the first language of our students in the pre-K program, as well as providing that English language support, too.
All right, on that, I, so I'm going to add to something. And this was something that we didn't pass for the funding this year, but I want my colleagues and the public to be aware. It was on the things that we would consider in the next budget. And so I do plan on championing the second part of the dual-language learning, which is a dedicated coordinator, coordinator role. So in the last budget cycle, which began this July 1st, we did stabilize some funding for dual-language learning. And I am really pleased with the expansion for the English language coordinators and the facilitators. I do believe, though, that dual-language learning is different. And I do believe that there should be coordination at a district level. We have wonderful programs, several of which we're going to hear about today. But I do believe that we've reached a point in the growth and we'll hear more about what the other schools are doing. I do believe that it would be worthwhile so that we actually have confluence and synchronicity across the programs. They've all been individual based on site-based leadership. Obviously, district leadership has had oversight with that, too. But I believe that we're at a critical point in the growth where a dedicated role would be very helpful to it. And I know all the people performing in these roles now are highly qualified and they're really wonderful, but it is still inherently different than a coordinator over dual-language learning to support all the site-based leaders and the direction of the district. So that's something that I'll be looking for here. And then I would also like to see, as we move forward, how do we take those AP opportunities that we're about to hear from Mount Rose and maybe offer that to other schools? Like I know we do have programs at Vaughn and other places. So I think that this is really important work. But when I did see this slide, it did not have the coordinator on it, so I did raise that. And I did share that, so no one was caught off guard that I did plan on addressing it today. Because when I think of opportunities for support and expansion, I believe we need somebody at a district level that's actually watching all these programs grow.
Thank you, and I would concur with that. How many languages do we encounter in Washoe County School District throughout our schools?
Currently, our enrollment, we have 103 different languages, which includes English language.
And that's, of course, a variety of dialects.
Yes, majority of which is Spanish, but we have a variety, very, yeah.
Yeah. So Spanish, yes. I mean, to me, that's, that's very self-evident. What are the discussions behind the scenes or in front right now about including other languages in our programs?
So we do have a history in Washoe County School District of this. At one point, I think it was Echo Loader, had a Mandarin language program. So, you know, as with most things when we're trying to launch, et cetera, there are certain barriers that we do come across. So not for saying that that wouldn't be possible. I think that we would just need to do a tremendous amount of research, look at different models across the nation, and really kind of hone in on the needs and the support that we can provide here at Washoe County.
One last thought into a question. The continuity and consistency of this programming is exemplary. So what have been the lessons learned, the secrets to hiring and retaining qualified teachers as she laughs?
No, might be a question for Principal Brown. I do know that both Principal Lane and Principal Brown really do a lot of hard work in trying to recruit and, and maintain teachers at this caliber. So I, again, I would probably defer more to them for that because it is not an easy feat by any means. But I do know that Principal Brown is a huge champion and advocate for the programs that we have here in Washoe County. And she goes out and when she's at these conferences, et cetera, she's really working in that recruitment role as well.
Thank you. And that hearkens to President Smith's desire, hope, wish, fingers crossed, to have a, a district-wide coordination for this programming. Thank you.
And if I can for a minute, so we know going through the strategic plan process, and I will speak for myself individually and I'll look for head nods around. But when I'm out in the community and in our strategic plan process, we talked with thousands of staff members, parents, students, community members. We heard loud and clear that our families are looking for opportunities in a few different areas, including CTE, which I think we're doing really great in, for dual-credit and advanced work, which I also think we're doing really well in. And for me, the third one in that category that I hear consistently is dual-language learning. And by the way, we do that very, very well. But it is one of those areas where I believe we're on the cusp of truly embracing into that next chapter. And I would like to see that because so many families are looking for that opportunity. And so those are the three things that I hear most often. And again, I'm pretty sure that the data showed us in the strategic plan process that that's also what our families are asking for, too. Obviously, more than the three things, but those were three very common themes. Trustee Church.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wa. This brought back memories of being a newly mentioned trustee back in January of 2021. And the agenda, I actually just pulled it up, where we, as a board, voted for an English language model, ELD Development Department, new policies. How does this relate to that? How does it support it, interact with it? How does that work?
Yes, thank you for your question, Trustee Church. That was actually kind of the precursor to the model that we have now. So if I'm remembering correctly, that was probably the meeting when Mrs. Janine Kelly was the Director of the Department. And we were really looking at that, what we called at that time the site facilitator model, which introduces the language coaching aspects in our schools. So that's where it has started. And now we have merged it to where every school now has a language support coach, so that we're continually building the capacity of embedding specific supports and strategies in our everyday instruction for all of our learners.
And as one of the foreign language speakers on the board, I remember how difficult it was for me to learn some aspects of it. And I, I wonder, I know we debated it back and forth and there's no perfect answer, but do we need to change our policy to, or to update what we're now kind of transitioning into?
I think that's something that we can certainly look at. We are currently working to update our guidebooks for both. We have one for DL, our dual-language, and we also have one for English language. So definitely something that, that I will look into.
Yeah, just because we have, as a board, you know, we voted, it's a published policy. So if we're going to, if somebody wants to read it, we need to make sure it's consistent with what we're morphing into, but thank you very much.
And I do believe, I did an edit of that recently, like within the last two years, I, I did, did look into the policy, so. And now, this is a very exciting thing that, that we get to share with you, is that we have now done an expansion into Wooster High School. Principal worked tirelessly last year through research and, and, and has done an outstanding job of outlining what the new Wooster bilingual program will look like. This is kind of, Wooster's kind of the perfect storm for this, given that they do have their extensive IB program. And they're also what we call a newcomer programming site, so they, so the two now can meet. Wooster is currently offering maths, math classes, that are taught almost 100% in Spanish, as well as some of what we call the, the middle-year program individual and societies class, which is like a social studies class, that is taught about 90 to 95% of the time in Spanish. And then as, much like what we had to do with, with Beck Elementary School, as the cohort grows and as the years progresses, more, more and more classes will be implemented in Spanish. So that's very, very exciting and just really speaks to the amazing work that Principal Kitchen did.
And Principal Kitchen is in our audience today. If you have any specific questions, we would like to, we wanted to make sure he had the opportunity to hear from you directly.
All right, Principal Kitchen, I know you're here. I try to never like pull people out of the audience, but this is a really exciting program. Would you mind? I know, well, I say, would you mind? I'm the one with the mic and I'm inviting you. And it's, how are you really going to say no? Which would be fine if you did. But would you mind coming up and sharing a little bit? I, I know some of where this began, because I was doing a site visit last year and I was visiting, as trustees do in their schools. And you said to me, "Oh, President Smith, we're going to do something really exciting here." And I was like, "Tell me all about it." And since then, you have built something that I think is the start of that next chapter that I was alluding to. Would you mind expanding for the public?
Yes, would you, just general overview of how we've started this year? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, you're, you, well, like when you came up to me that day, when we were outside,
Absolutely.
You had an inspiration. There were things you were noticing about the school, you had things you were noticing about the students and talent that you felt you could tap into if you reached them a different way. And that was through language.
Yes.
So I know I'm reminding you of a conversation that took place nearly a year ago, but if you could share that with us.
Happy to. Thank you, President Smith and Superintendent Ernst, Board of Trustees. So I was an important piece of this puzzle, as I was new to Wooster High School last year. So was very familiar with IB. I formerly was actually a principal of an IB World School in Mexico. And so knew that IB was something I was excited to get back into. Did not, when I started at Wooster, fully understand the compatibility with what was going on there, with the possibility for bilingual education. So I do have three children. I have a daughter who's in the Jesse Beck TWEE program or dual-language program, two sons who are with Principal Brown in middle school at Mount Rose. So I had some familiarity, familiarity, familiar, I can't say that word apparently, some knowledge of dual-language education. And what I did not know until I started at Wooster is that we had just the year prior graduated our first IB bilingual diploma student. So there was a lot of work going on that was already in place. And so as we dug in, one of the things that's unique about IB in both our feeder middle school and at Wooster is that students who are in the middle-years program are required to be engaged with a second language every year. So we have students coming to Wooster High School with a higher level of academic exposure to Spanish, whether that was the small number of students coming from Mount Rose or the students coming out of the NYPD program at Vaughn, who were going into Literacy 5-6 classes, which are classes designed for native Spanish speakers. And so a lot of that was already in place. So what we decided to do, and I think the light bulb that went off for me is I was sitting, I mean, man, this was, must have been the first month of school. And I was sitting next to a student in a geometry class. And this young lady had, two years prior, been a newcomer student, so brand-new to country, brand-new to Washoe County School District. And she had worked so hard to learn English, was getting As and Bs in all of her classes, and was just struggling in geometry. And I'm sitting right next to her and she's telling me what's going on and she's struggling with the vocabulary. And I'm like, this is a young lady who academically totally has the math skills, but language is a barrier. And so that was, I think, the light bulb moment for me of, I'm sure she's not the only one in that boat. How can we do more to celebrate the natural talents of our students that already exist at Wooster High School? So we started exploring how we could launch a bilingual education program going into the school year. I'll brag, our three math teachers are all products of Washoe County School District. So they are all students who grew up in bilingual families. And now are teachers at Wooster High School, all very excited to be doing this work. And they are actually part of that bilingual education cohort that Ms. Wa was describing earlier. So yeah, we're 10 days into it, so it's brand-new, but very excited about the work that's happening.
So really quick, approximate number, roughly how many students this year are taking at least one subject in that dual-language format?
Ms. Van Tress, do you have a number for us?
Well, if we look at our ninth grade, ninth graders that are taking the algebra class, there were 38 students in that freshman algebra, Spanish class. So if you think about it just the same way as we started with kindergarten with our other programs, as this grows, we will continue to see more, more coursework, et cetera.
So I'll add on to that, our, our full cohort is our ninth grade cohort. So we have that Individuals and Societies class, it's an NYPD class. It's part of our ninth grade seminar that all students take at Wooster. So there is a group of 30-something kids in that class who are all kind of launching our cohort. Not all of those students have chosen to also take math and Spanish. So that's where the numbers get a little fuzzy. We have two sections of algebra currently taught in Spanish, two sections of geometry, and then a section of formal geometry. So we have 10th graders engaged. We also have newcomers who are throughout the school year. We also have newcomers who are throughout the school year, if they're academically ready to be in a math class, we'll plug them in. So probably ninth and 10th grade, if it's kids who are taking three classes or just one class, 120 something kids.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. At this point, are there any questions about our district level EL programs, dual language TWEE programs? If not, I'm ready to turn the mic over to our spotlight. All right, well, thank you very much. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Mike Paul, who will be presenting for our Mount Rose K-8 school.
Beth, thank you for the question. Getting to, back to families and, and engaging them, involving them in this beautiful programming, what do we do to involve them directly? And I'm really thinking about parents that want to learn along with their child.
And so program specific, both Mount Rose K-8 and Jesse Beck, as I mentioned, have really strong parent support and, and parent groups. In terms of district wide, we work alongside our, our Office of Family and School Partnerships to really engage and work with our families. We do have a lot of families who want to learn alongside their, their students, and so we work with other sources like Rise Academy to offer English courses. We do have the Literacy Council also that offers courses or English classes for adults. So I think we look at two different things. We look at that educational component that we're working to continually grow and expand for, for our families, but then also the engagement in the school itself. And when it comes to the engagement in the school itself, I know that both of these schools do a tremendous job in really engaging their families in, in the programs. And, you know, with the culture around both of these schools is outstanding.
Thank you, and that's good, that's lovely to hear, and maybe someday we can have a dual graduation ceremony.
I'd like to know who's going to speak the dual language part on that, Dr. Dai.
I will put, but Jesse Beck does, I know Jesse Beck does do an advancement ceremony for their fifth graders that, that complete the TWEE program, so.
Thank you for, for coming up as well. I have, I do have a follow-up, I think you said it early, just want to clarify, and thank you for your, your continued effort on this. This is amazing work. It's, it's a unique model that clearly there's, there's a demand for. I'm wondering, can you, again, for the record, just state for those that want to attend the program at, at Beck and, and Mount Rose, this goes beyond the zone schools? I mean, is there a lottery system? How can, how can families participate?
Thank you for the question. This is also part of our school choice, so families would like to participate when we open up our next, for the 25, 26 school year, which will be this fall. Families may apply at that time.
And really quick, before we have Principal Brown come up, it's a little different, but to also partially address what Trustee Nicolette mentioned, our very own superintendent, when he was the principal at Anderson Elementary School, made arrangements for English language learning classes for the parents of his students that they held onsite there at Anderson in the evenings.
That's correct. It was a really nice collaboration. Thank you, President Smith. It was a really nice collaboration with TMCC College. We had instructors come in and work with our families. And again, to the, to the point of it, when we have our families, our students in our schools working together, we can make great things happen for our students.
Thank you. And just to clarify, when I said dual language graduation, I meant adults and students.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and Board of Trustees. It is my, I'm Mike Paul, Associate Chief with Elementary Education. It is my pleasure at this time in the presentation to introduce our Spotlight School today. As you have just heard, Mount Rose K-8 School of Languages is our only K-8 school in our district to offer a two-way immersion program, and they have a very strong record of success. As you can see here up on the current slide, several of the last school years, they have had a four or five star rating with the Nevada School Performance Framework. And you, as you can see, just in this last school year, overall math proficiency at Mount Rose is up into 72% proficiency, and with ELA, up to 81% proficiency. So outstanding performance from Mount Rose School. And with this, I don't want to take any more time away from our Spotlight guests here, I would like to introduce Principal Chrissy Brown and also Spotlight Student Eva Garcia, so they can let you know of all of the great things that make Mount Rose such a special place to be.
Thank you so much, Dr. Paul. Welcome, Principal Brown and Eva.
Thank you so much for having us. Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and members of the board. I'm Chrissy Brown, the principal of Mount Rose K-8. Super excited to be here today and appreciate the opportunity. Yes, and her name looks like Eva, but it's Ava, so I know inside she's like, it's Ava. But she'll be speaking next, but we're very proud to be here and talk about our awesome school and to be spotlighted, so we appreciate it. We're proud of our scores and everything that we have done. In the audience, I know a couple of people came, it was early, and we were, we are appreciative of that. Ava was happy to get out early. I know she was like, yes, let's go. But we have our board president here with us and a couple of our PTA members that were able to come, so you know I cannot do this alone. And it's never, this is my 15th year at Mount Rose, believe it or not, but it's gone by very fast. And I also have key helpers with me in the audience. I have my assistant principal and Christie Fernandez, I think you're right there?
Yes.
But parents and some kids, so we didn't want to make it a huge deal, but they did come for support because it is a community. And that's one thing that has made Mount Rose successful is it truly is a family. Like we consider ourselves a family, and when we were preparing for this, which we didn't get much time, Ava and I on the way here, we're like, did you practice? No, did you? No, we're just going to wing it. But when we were talking about it, we both said that. We both said it's, we're like a family. And I think that what, that's what makes us so special is our culture and the family that we have created at Mount Rose. When we look at like the pillars and all of them, just not A and C, but A, B, C, and D, I looked at all of them, and we really do have that at Mount Rose. Some of the things every year are, are not just the leadership in our staff and students and community and myself, but I think I put myself further and further down on the leadership pole because they take over. And I, I honestly say that we had, my Catherine Cortez Masto came, and I said, kids, you're doing it all, you're taking over. And they led her around and showed her our school. I didn't have to give them any guidance. And I said, this is what it's all about. Like I have done my job because they, I feel like some days I don't have to be there. Like they can truly lead our school. So that's what I feel is special about Mount Rose and that I have done my job, that they can be the leaders. We do, as far as standards, and I think that's what has helped us have strong test scores. And I'm not a huge proponent of tests, but I think it, it just comes naturally with the culture, is that there's, we are standards based, so we teach the standards, but the teachers have a lot of leeway in how they teach them. I treat them as professionals, and I tell them, you're professionals, you teach the standards how you want to teach them. I mean, I know the standards inside and out, and so do my, all of my strong leadership team, and they can teach them how they want to teach them, and they have the flexibility to do that because they're professionals. The instruction is rigorous. Ava and I were also talking about this, and I said, what do you think is special about Mount Rose? And she'll tell you, but the first thing she said is it's flexibility, and she gets to take risks and do what she wants, which is awesome. And that's what I love too, and I'm, because that's what I love about my teachers. And so that leads to pillar C, which they are treated like professionals. We don't have a lot of turnover at Mount Rose, they're happy. When I first came to Mount Rose 15 years ago, I remember telling my secretary, like, I just want kids happy, I want them to be there. I want, if I could make it like Disneyland, that's what I would want it to be like. Like I want it to be like Disneyland. How can we make it like Disneyland? Like have them come and want to come every day and be happy. And obviously, we did something right because our chronic absenteeism is like really low, you know? Even the kids, you don't want to come, come all the time. Just kidding, you do want them to come, but yeah, they, they come all the time, which is awesome, and we're very proud of that. So our mission statement is to create a community of global leaders, and we really try to do that. Megan was saying there's 103 languages. Mount Rose is the perfect little bubble right in downtown Reno, which is probably one of the most diverse schools. We have so many languages there. About probably 10 years ago, we had, and we have like a multicultural night every year, but we had, like all the kids who spoke different languages come up and share their languages, and we must have had, do you remember that, Ava? Yeah, you were little. But we had, we had so many, like Russian, Polish, I mean, it was, and I was like, oh my gosh, this is crazy. So it's like, it's like in the melting pot of downtown Reno, and it's very special, all different cultures. And, and we really try to celebrate that and appreciate that, and I think that's very special about our school, so.
And Principal Brown, remember, because I warned you, I was going to do this really fast, okay? Because I know we're going to be honoring Eva here in a moment. You are a pollinator of knowledge here in the school district and for this community. Can you take us back very, very briefly, before 2008? Can you explain how dual language learning came to Washoe County, and then how it went from Jesse Beck over to Mount Rose? Can you just give a little bit of that history so that we can appreciate? We, we just heard how it grew from the schools we have now, which also includes Vaughn, over to Wooster, and that work had been happening. But can you take us back a little bit to where it began, just very briefly?
Sure. And we had just decided, like in 2007, to try it at Jesse Beck, and that was with our director at that time, with Mary Ann Robinson. And we had to research because no one was doing it, so we, we went to Miami at that time to look at the schools back then, at Coral Way, the K through eight that was back there. And so it was just a trial and error. And we did, we researched, started in kindergarten in 2008 at Jesse Beck. It was, it was not taken well, it was crazy. It was way back then, we, I bought a big sign for the fence that said, two languages, two worlds of opportunity, and it literally got tagged twice, and it said, go back to your own country. Mine, it wasn't taken well in Reno. I still have the newspaper articles, and we couldn't get people to join the program. That was crazy. It was 2008 because they didn't want another language being taught because we were doing all Spanish. And my teacher at that time, Hesella Daniel, who has taught with me forever, and then became a dean at HUG, and then is now retired just last year. We tell the story all the time, and, and we told the story with Leah Kushner, who's, she's, I think she's here, I saw her, but, whose daughter now goes to my school too. It's just how it has grown now. And then anyway, so it became popular after a while. And then in 2010, when Heath Morrison was here, Mount Rose had a population of 200 kids, and he, I had only been at Jesse Beck for like three years, it was going to be my fourth year, and he had just asked, because the two-way immersion program had gotten so popular at Mount Rose by that time, within four years, and he had asked if I would come over to Jesse Beck. And I was like, no, I'm happy, I don't want to, I don't want to transfer. And so then I, I said, okay, I'll think about it, because it was kind of, I was kind of voluntold. We want you to go over there. So it was a, well, they only had a population of 200 kids, and they were going to tear Mount Rose down. Do you guys, do you remember that, when it was talked about, Joe? Yeah, it was, they were thinking about tearing it down, and I'm like, that's not going to go over good in Reno. I'm like a native Nevadaan, and I don't think it's going to go good, but I'll try something to increase the population. So I thought about it and had researched tons of stuff, and I was really a dual immersion advocate. And I said, how about if I try a K-8 eventually to get more kids there, because it's a neighborhood school? So I was researching that whole time, brought the dual immersion program there, and then it took me three years, so I started the K-8 in 2013. And Deborah Byersdorf was my area superintendent at that time, and she was on board, and it was, the board approved, and I researched, went to California schools, and it, you know how hard it is now, like with you guys and incline and stuff, but it, it was taken well with the dual immersion program. So they've tried it, and now it's really popular, and it was, we had a lot of buy-in, and it's doing great, was the vertical alignment is amazing, but I know it's a lot smaller scale. So it's different than like the big scale that you guys are doing, but that's how it came.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being a visionary and for pushing through, and I, I think it's very interesting to see how the initial response was, and now we have more families than we can even accommodate in these programs. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I know we have a phenomenal student here as well, too.
Yes, this is awesome, Ava Garcia. She's been at Mount Rose, she's an eighth grader, she's been at Mount Rose since kindergarten, so I've been lucky enough to be her principal for nine years. And she's going to talk about what makes Mount Rose special also.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, President Smith and Superintendent Ernst and board members for having us here today. As she stated before, Mount Rose is basically one big family. It's where people can express themselves and like, they can safely take risks and explore kind of, like, sorry, I lost my spot. But yeah, so I've been there for nine years, and I've felt very safe. The two-way immersion program also has helped me develop bilingual skills and biliterate skills. I personally believe this will help me in my future career, and with all students who have graduated and are yet to graduate, and can help like communicate with more people in the world. I'm pretty sure that Spanish is one of the top five languages spoken in the US. And personally, it helped, it has helped me communicate more with my grandmother, who can only speak Spanish, so I'm very grateful for Mount Rose's program. The staff also, they are very amazing. I, I really enjoy my time at Mount Rose, and I love to be there. And I would like, I, when I was younger, I would never want to miss school because I loved my teachers and my friends and the community that we've built there. And finally, my favorite portrait quality is that Mount Rose allows you to take risks and encourages you to express yourself, and with our, like leadership and problem-solving opportunities, personally in middle school, there's this leadership program, and it allows us to do a lot of things with our younger students. And when I was younger, I looked up on the leadership kids, and now I am one, so it's kind of cute.
That is amazing, and you are one, and you're here right now doing something that so many adults are nervous with doing, but you've done absolutely so well. And before I turn it over to Superintendent Ernst, because we do have a And before I turn it over to Superintendent Ernst, because we do have a special recognition for Ava, do any of my colleagues have any additional questions? Because once I turn it over to Superintendent Ernst, after that, we're going to celebrate Ava, so.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a comment, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ava, for coming. We're very proud of you and it takes a lot of courage to come up here. So you did very, very well. Thank you. Ms. Brown, I agree with you. You have made it a place to feel like family. I don't know if you remember, many years ago, I came and visited you as a representative of the community and didn't have a meeting. And I just asked me with the, with the principal, didn't know much about dual learning, but you gave me a lot of time and you explained everything to me. And I really appreciate how warm and kind you were and how you listened to my questions. And I was there on behalf of another family representing the city of Reno. And you made me feel like family. So I appreciate it. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I do remember, Alex. And I sometimes think that's old school, but I always say, just come in, because I don't even know my voicemail number. I'm like, don't call me because I don't even know the number to check my voicemail. Just come in, I'll always talk to you. I'll make the time.
Thank you, President Smith. Chrissy, I wanted to just extend a big thank you on behalf of Washoe County School District. Your commitment to dual language programming, as demonstrated by the presentation and all of your work, has been exemplary and very much appreciated from our whole school district. Having had an opportunity to visit your school a couple times recently, when you described the culture in your building, you may not even be describing it at the levels that are so tangible when we visit your building. From students to staff to family, the culture that you create in your building is really an exemplar for all of our schools and the culture that we're working to build. And so before we, we move on, I, I really wanted to just make sure that we had a chance to thank you for your leadership in this area and helping us grow dual language programming to lower levels that we have. So very heartfelt thank you to you, Mrs. Brown. And then I would like to acknowledge Ava. Ava, thank you for being here today. It is, as Trustee Woodley said, not always the easiest thing to speak in front of all of these adults looking at you in front of this venue, but you came up and you carried yourself with the class that it looks like that you always do. And when you described, when you were a younger student over at Mount Rose and the giving back and the paying forward that occurs with our seventh and eighth grade middle schoolers, back to the elementary school students, having had that for yourself and now having the opportunity to give that back, that's a really special component at Mount Rose and we appreciate you doing that. And, and so as Mrs. Brown has said, you are a wonderful student and we appreciate you being here, the work that you're doing. And with that, we wanted to recognize you today as being our Washoe County Student Superstar Award. So thank you for being here and we're going to come and share this award with you.
All right, everybody. We're going to bring it back here to the dais. Here we go. Yeah, very gently. We're going to, but this was, this was a wonderful conversation and I appreciate it very much. So thank you all so much. All right, that closes item 3.01 and we'll move on now to item 3.02. This is the discussion and possible action to provide preliminary approval of Board Policy 5720, hazing prohibited, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. And presenting with us today, we have Judy Preetzman, our Director, Department of Civil Rights Compliance, and then also our Chief General Counsel, Neil Lombardo. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you and good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and members of the board. Judy Preetzman, Director of Civil Rights Compliance. And this proposed Board Policy 5720 would demonstrate the commitment of the Board of Trustees and the Washoe County School District to provide safe and respectful environments free from hazing within its schools, buses, and other facilities, and at all district-sponsored events. Hazing is currently identified as prohibited conduct within the district's athletic manuals. However, this proposed policy specifies in the definition of hazing that hazing would be prohibited with regard to any student organization, including athletics. This policy incorporates the definition of hazing that you would find in the University of Nevada Reno's hazing and also language from a sample anti-hazing policy that was developed by the National Foundation of State High School Associations. The policy on page two contemplates that an administrative regulation will be adopted to implement and maintain the purpose of this board policy. And so we are looking for preliminary approval and to move this policy to the public review and comment period.
Yeah, so the reason why we were bringing this forward now is we felt this was an opportunity for the board to show its commitment to make sure that our schools have a safe, respectful learning environment. Unfortunately, hazing is far too often seen as boys will be boys, girls will be girls, and that it's kind of has some quasi-acceptance. And that needs to end. And given recent national issues, last year, local issues, we thought it was time to address this and for the board to take a true stance on this issue.
Number one, so the admin reg would then come back to, for public review as well?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Church. That's right. The administrative regulation would be a new administrative regulation, subject to all the usual public review periods.
And then I have a question. It looks good overall, but it's number C on page two, which is under definitions. And if you could kind of explain to me, and I'm going to cut out part of it, but any situation which adversely affects the mental health or dignity of the individual, who decides that? My concern is that people act completely legitimately, but the individual says, oh, that affects my mental, you know, I'm not comfortable with it. Well, if, if the people that are making them uncomfortable are acting legally, appropriately, nicely, but the individual feels slighted, where do you draw the line? How do you define that?
Thank you for that question, Trustee Church. To clarify, are you asking about subsection C on page one?
Page two, under definitions, am I? It's page one? Oh, I'm sorry, list page two, yeah.
Okay, so under definitions, subsection 1C. So all of these definitions, which are meant to identify what hazing would be considered, would be reviewed, it's contemplated that these would be reviewed by the individual who would be investigating any reports of hazing. And so under, on page two, one of the items that would be addressed in the administrative regulation, there under subsection 4C states that one of the things addressed in the regulation would be, I'm sorry, 4B, is that there would be guidance for school site administrators, including bullying investigation requirements and procedures. So to answer your question, I think it would be up to the investigator to apply our bullying criteria and also look at the definition contained in this policy to determine whether or not hazing has actually occurred. So it's, it's, of course, a case-by-case situation.
You know, I, I caught this at the end and I'm not comfortable with this and maybe I'm being hazed, humor, humor, but it, it does, I'm looking for, we want to avoid the investigation. We want, this policy is supposed to provide guidance to the reader, the employee, whatever, followed by the admin reg. And this is so vague as anybody could violate it for anything. And then I'm subject to an investig-, me personally, but one is subject to an investigation and then one is found guilty for something they didn't even know they did because the investigator determines that the individual's mental health was hurt. I, I mean, I really, I mean, you know, physical activity, whipping, beating, branding, forced calisthenics, I get that. But you get down to number C, any situation, what is the word? Any situation that subjects the individual to extreme stress. I get the sleep deprivation, I get all that, but anything that affects their mental health. I mean, I, I can just probably picture a number of examples where you simply make a nice comment to somebody or an opinion on something, you know, like, oh gee, I, I hope, I hope so-and-so wins the, the foot race. Oh, I'm being hazed because you don't want me to win. So I guess I've said enough.
Well, may I weigh in? So the, the, first of all, this was adopted by, we cop, we used, borrowed several universities, including UNR to develop this policy, as well as other national universities. And the purpose is to not avoid the investigation because we owe our students due process. So the purpose is to have a process and this is the process. And the regs will be adopted once this is done according to our bullying process in effect. But bullying doesn't define hazing as part of bullying. And so this is, again, the opportunity for this board to have hazing. And it's not as simple as a mere allegation. Substantial evidence is required. And if you look at burden of proof, substantial evidence is more than preponderance of evidence, which is what you need to prove a civil trial. It is, it is less than clear and convincing, so it's less than the criminal standard, but it's more than the civil standard. So you have to have substantial evidence. It's not just as simple as somebody saying, I have subjective harm. And the process for investigations is a multi-step process. Somebody submits to the Administrative Investigation Division a complaint, and this already exists in regulation, and this is Regulation 9160 and/or 5180, I think. Anyway, so what happens is a complaint is submitted, the complaint is reviewed and looked at and determined whether or not on its face it even meets the level of any of this. And if it doesn't meet the level of it, then it's summarily dismissed. So that's why you do a policy like this and that's why there's an attached regulation so that everyone is protected and it's not just somebody throwing out an allegation. Because the last thing we want to do is unfairly discipline our students for, without having some process for them. So that's, that's what this is laying out and that's how this works with the other regulation policies that exist. And then there will be, need to be a regulation on point related to this one as well.
Thank you, counsel. And just from my perspective, just reading this, because this is my job as enforcing policy, I read this section C in its entirety. So as I read it, it states, "Any situation which subjects the individual to extreme stress, such as sleep deprivation, forced inclusion from social contact, or forced conduct which produces pain, physical discomfort, or adversely affects the mental health or dignity of an individual." So I read this as the forced conduct which produces pain, physical discomfort, or adversely affects the mental health or dignity of an individual. That for me is efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on this. I, I think it is high time. I see this as the 50,000-foot view. I think, to use a trite saying, the devil will be in the details. And that's the administrative regulation, which I am going to assume, because I know the strength of this leadership team, will include a reflection on confidentiality of reporting structure, also training. Because there will need to be a way to help employees, students, families understand how this is developed and what it means.
Two more comments real quick. So number one, I noticed that under purpose, the purpose isn't to investigate. The purpose is, the board is committed to providing safe and respectful environment free from hazing within its schools, et cetera. So I see that as the purpose and I think I'm okay with it, but I just also want to address, under definition number one, this seems to be limited to only those situations that are involving an initiation or affiliation with a student organization. So can you confirm that? This wouldn't be somebody outside of a student organization expressing an opinion. That wouldn't be covered under, this would be covered under a different policy. Am I on the right track?
Yes, thank you for the question. So hazing, really by definition, does typically include initiation or affiliation with a group. It is typically done by a group towards a group. Not always, but that is typically, and so I think the other individual conduct that you might be referring to would be the type of conduct that is currently addressed under Board Policy 5700, which is our more general, safe and respectful learning environment board policy.
Thank you, President Smith. Hi. So in looking at this, and, and I appreciate this because I really feel we need to protect students that this is occurring to. But I'm also kind of concerned with, especially when I read the part there about the lewd, yeah, definitions D, lewd conduct. I'd really like us- us to see what is causing some of these students to act in this way. There has to be something underlying going on in their lives. And I feel like we need to have, as much as we need to protect the kids that hazing or bullying is happening to, I feel like we've got to get something in place to really delve in, and to get the supports, counseling, whatever, for the students that are engaging in this. In that way, I think we become healthier, but, I mean, maybe that's for a different policy altogether, or while these investigations are going on, that is looked into for these students that are doing the behavior to others. Because I just can't help but think, somewhere along the line, things are being done to these students, or have been done to these students. Thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Vice President Mayberry, before you go, I'm going to invite Chief Legal Counsel to jump in, and maybe offer some thoughts on what Trustee Westlake just shared.
Well, I'll weigh in on a couple of different things, if I may. First of all, with regard to confidentiality, it's already written in our policy, that it'll be confidential, and that's, I missed it by one, number 5701. And then, the other part is training. Judy, Ms. Pritzman, trains coaches, she trains teachers, she trains admin every year. In fact, she's already completed her training for civil rights bullying for this year, so everyone's ready to go for the new school year. And this will be integrated into those trainings. That's our intent, once this is up and running. And then, with regard to students who might be the perpetrator, for lack of a better phrase, we work with Catherine Louden's team very, very closely, and they provide supports for those people as well. So, what would happen in the circumstance is, let's pretend an organization has an issue, four or five students are picking on one student, there would be a safety plan put in place, and there would be some type of protections put in place. But if there was an issue, as you suggest, then Ms. Louden's team would work with both sides, and try to make sure that issues are addressed. And that's how we handle it with bullying as well. So, I hope that helps.
Okay. Madam President, I move to approve proposed Board Policy 5720, hazing prohibited, and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period.
Second?
All right, I have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, seconded by Trustee Nicolet. Trustee Woodley, okay. Seeing no lights on for further discussion for the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And that closes Section 3 in its entirety, and brings us now to Section 4, our reports. And we will begin with our student representative, Annie Batavia.
Hi. This week, we've kind of been busy with Student Voice, so we had our retreat last Friday. We got to miss school for it, which was pretty fun. But we met at the Sparks Library, and talked about what we want to focus on this year. And last year, we had focused on three kind of committees, we called ourselves, and they're just three big issues that we felt we wanted to discuss throughout the year, rather than picking each month, we'll talk about something. So, I think we're going to continue that this year. And some of the things that we decided we want to look more into was post-secondary resources, inclusion for all, and then inclusion slash representation. So, we'll probably work on that again tonight, because there's another Student Voice meeting, which I'm not able to attend, but it's at McQueen High School. And that will be the district's Student Voice meeting. And we're rotating at locations, so everyone can come, because I know Incline, it's really hard to get there. And we had previously met at HUG. So, we're moving it, and moving it all around, and they're probably discussing that now. Yeah, I think with school starting, we're all kind of getting dialed in, and things are getting back into order.
Well, thank you so much, Annie. All right, that closes item 4.01, and brings us now to item 4.02, our board reports. Trustee Westlake, will you kick us off?
Thank you. It's going to be short and sweet. So, I have a couple of pictures. Let's see which comes up first. This is Mr. Luke Hobson. He is an Olympian. And we got to hear from Luke at Reno High School, where he went back to talk to the students of Reno High, graduated there three years ago. And I just, I have to say, I think it's amazing that these young adults go back and give back to their communities. I just think it is such, it's such a growing experience for the kids at Reno High School, and for Luke, to go and give back to his community. I actually watched him on the relay team, win silver for the United States, when I was over in Paris, the four-by-200 meter, and just a remarkable young man. And I am so appreciative of these young people that do that. And then the Las Vegas Raiders, I got to go to HUG High School, and where they gave the football players dry shirt, dry shirts, and receiver gloves, and a $5,000 check. And, you know, it just sticks in my mind, as we were leaving, one of the coaches said that, you know, maybe our football players will be able to go to a football camp next year. We weren't able to afford it this year. And thank you, Las Vegas Raiders, for giving them the opportunity to do that, if that's how they choose to spend that money. It's very much appreciated. And then I just want to give my apologies to the Children's Cabinet, and to Sun Valley Elementary School. On Friday, I missed both events, due to a migraine. I was going to go to the welcoming parents at Sun Valley Elementary School, an elementary school dear to my heart, and the Children's Cabinet, that does such incredible work in our community for families and children, amazing things that they do. But my friend, Michelle Anderson, became Colleen that evening, and she, she repped it well. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam President. Mine's going to be short as well. It was a short week since our last meeting. I did have the opportunity to go to a couple of football games. What stood out for me was the Lancers, McQueen High School. I had a photo, but I didn't submit it in time, so I will be bringing it next, next meeting. But I got to see Varsity play, and I got to see a coach, one of the coaches, Ralph Rodriguez, who was joined by his brother, Nick Shepherd, and they were both coaching, and they got to see Ralph's son, Nathan Rodriguez, number seven, running back. He got a touchdown. So, that was beautiful to see. And I did get a photo of all three of them, so I'll be bringing that next, for next meeting. I also got the opportunity to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet dinner. I know our president was there as well, representing our district. This is a, once, once a year, the biggest fundraiser, predominantly, they fundraise for scholarships and youth-oriented programs. So, I was happy to participate in that. And then this week, I got another couple of football games I'm going to be attending for freshmen, and JV, and Varsity, so I look forward to that. And, oh, one last thing, I was invited to be a judge at the RIB cook-off as a school board trustee. I almost forgot. Yes, I'll be there Saturday. Thank you.
I want to know how you got invited. I like to eat, so. So, basically, I was on a great vacation across the great state of Nevada. But I wanted to pass on that they are looking for judges for a debate tournament. I believe it's open to any independent members of the community, September 16th and 17th. I won't be able to be there, but if you want to reach out to me, I can put you in touch with the coordinator for that. But they are looking for judges for debate. I did it once before, fantastic. These kids are just incredible, in what they do, and, and you learn so much in the debate. So, I do have that information on request. I'll also opine, very briefly, some of our S-PAC scores are out, some of our testing scores, more are going to be out in mid-September. I predicted that we would continue a decline, and I was wrong. We've leveled off, that's good. That's bad. We're not improving, but we're not decreasing very much. Our ACT scores are still last in the nation, and Washoe County is below the state average. So, we have a brand-new superintendent, and we've talked about it, and a lot of work ahead of us. And in my remaining time as a trustee, I look forward to being a part of that, that we, we just have to do better. We must do, must do better. So, I, I just hope that we pay laser-focused on our strategic plan, and focusing on quality of education along those lines. Other than that, I could share lots of pictures of my vacation, Ely, and ghost-towning along the way. It was incredible, but good learning experience for Nevada history. But I guess that's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of attending a couple of our community fundraisers for two very important nonprofit organizations. One is the Art of Childhood event. That's a big event for the Children's Cabinet, critical, important partner for the school district. And that evening, I believe, they raised about $1 million. The Community Health Alliance was held the following night. They had a fundraiser, and that's another very important organization. It's dedicated to creating a lot of positive health outcomes, and in many cases, affordable health comes, health outcomes, or free health care for those that can't afford it. So, I appreciate both organizations very much. This is a picture of a visit at the Academy of Arts and Careers in Technology, where students are enrolled in the second-year fire science program, and they were simulating an auto extrication, where they were cutting up a vehicle. You can go to the next slide as well. So, that was a lot of fun. And I'll say, too, that I understand more good news is coming out of AAC T soon, in terms of a CTE program, and I'll let the district make that announcement. I'll just say that the sky is no longer the limit there. And last week, I had an opportunity to visit Esther Bennett Elementary with Principal Diaz. And speaking of the S-PAC scores, they're making some great strides in their S-PAC scores as well. A wonderful school on a hill in Sun Valley, and I appreciate their dedication to our students. Thank you.
I, too, attended the Art of Childhood, and yes, they raised $947,000. I mean, we have a very generous community. And that money is, having worked for the cabinet many years ago, I can attest to the fact that that money, every cent of that money, is used wisely to support our children, families, and people in our community. And it's such a fun event. Wow, they really know how to put on a party. It's fun, and it's worthy. I attended the Public Safety Center ribbon-cutting, and my tour guide, if you will, was WCSD Chief Tracy Moore. And it, I will say that that Public Safety Center truly is a public center. They have areas for the public to be comfortable. They have areas for children to be comfortable. They have training areas. They have everything, and they're not done. That's the cool part. This center is, is truly an exemplar for the state of Nevada, and, and they're just getting started. This is going to be so wonderful for our peacekeepers, a nice place to call home, to disperse from, to come back to. They will have everything they need to have their, their vehicles, their every, all of their tools maintained and cared for. It's just a beautiful facility. And Chief Nance did an excellent job of, of speaking to us and for the community, and she has a lovely sense of humor. So, I had the pleasure of being recognized with some other colleagues from Truckee Meadows Community College. It was an emeritus type of affair, and it was, it was legacy emeritai, which means I'm retired, and I've moved on, and I'm not young anymore, which I'm okay with. It was a wonderful event. I had several colleagues that were not there, that I wish were there, that I spent a good 20 years working alongside. Their picture was there, they were not there, but it was so, it was, it was just a lovely event. And thank you, Truckee Meadows Community College, and Tommy Guy, for, for making that happen. I attended the Consortium of Independent Public Charter Schools, Snacks, High Desert, Mariposa, and Honors Academy of Literature were there. And I learned a lot more about our, at least four of our Washoe County School District-sponsored charter schools. I'm very glad I attended. They're working very hard, making good things happen for their families, and their students, and their employees, and, and I thank them for the invitation.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start off with the congratulations. So, our very own K-9 Officer Astro was in national and international news, being recognized as one of the gun detection dogs out there. And also, a special congratulations to our Deputy Chief Baker and Officer Bowers, who were also in that article. So, that was really exciting. And also, proud to know that we're on the leading edge of that. And he's not with us today, but I never miss an opportunity to show honor and appreciation for Clerk Rodriguez, who was one of the strong voices that led us to that as well. I attended the ribbon-cutting of the City of Reno's Public Safety Center, which Trustee Nicolet also mentioned, at the location of the old RGJ building. And I loved when Chief Catherine Nance did a shout-out for Trustee Woodley, although in his daytime job capacities. So, that was always great. I had a wonderful time with Superintendent Ernst, Vice President Mayberry, and Trustee Nicolet at the Children's Cabinet Art of Childhood event. And then also, the Community Health Alliance's annual fundraiser, for their free and low-cost medical and mental health services for our communities. And was very glad to share that with several trustees, who were also there in attendance, and also learned some exciting news, that the City of Reno has pledged $5 million to helping them expand their services. So, congratulations. I love seeing when our community works together for benefit like that. I took a meeting with the Renown Health Foundation and their leaders about the healthcare needs of our students and their families, and what we're facing as a community. I met with Richard Meyer from the Rotary about his Read Between the Lions program, which is very exciting. And it's not about the reading itself, it's about training your eyes, and how you look at information on a page. And I thought that that was really exciting. I did participate, and attend the NAACP Freedom Fund Gala, also attended by Trustee Woodley. I feel like we were at a lot of things together. And then, finally, I'd like to also bring attention that it is National Be Smart Week. And so, Be Smart is a national and local, non-political organization, whose goal it is to keep kids, classrooms, and communities safe from violence. And that's through emphasizing and raising awareness for safe and secure gun storage. And so, SMART stands for Secure, Model, Ask, Recognize, Tell. And it's something that we're all responsible for as adults. And so, I want to say thank you for everybody being here today, and for the exciting start of school. And that brings me to the end of my board report, and closes item 4.02 in its entirety, and brings us now to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Smith. So, I, too, was able to attend the Children's Cabinet Gala. And what I walk away with was, again, how terrific our community is in support of our students. To raise nearly $1 million for students that, that maybe need a little extra help is a testimony to our community. And, and as I've said, I think us in education, working with our community partners, there's a lot of interest, and I think together, we can still do a lot of great things for our students. Had the chance to also visit the ribbon-cutting at the Public Safety Center. Again, just a wonderful testimony to the community that we live in, with, with many people that care about the safety of all of the community. Had a chance to get over to Double Diamond to welcome our kindergartners back, always a special day, one of my favorite days. If you've ever had a chance to see our five-year-olds come on the first day of school, along with their parents, it's, it's an awfully special something. Had a chance to get up to Incline Schools, great things happening up at Incline Schools, the high- Great things happening up at Incline Schools, the high school right now. We were led by two wonderful students that gave us a tour of the building to show all of the tremendous things that are happening. The expansion that's occurring at Incline High School is really tremendous and will not be just something that benefits the school, but it will benefit the entire community. One of my favorite visits was over to our Nutrition Service Center. It is absolutely amazing work that occurs in our Nutrition Service Center. The amount of meals that are being processed, all that they are doing for special dietary conditions, and just making sure that our students are fed every day was tremendous. And when we talk about strengthening culture, to see the culture in that building and see the employees working together and their happiness and joy in terms of putting these meals together for our students was really a great sight to see. Had a chance to go over to the UNR and speak with the College of Education. This was a first-time something with Washoe County School District Superintendent, where I had the chance to speak and welcome back the entire College of Education and really kind of greet them and let them know about the tremendous work that's occurring in Washoe County School District. So we're really looking forward to continuing that partnership. And concluded with an outstanding visit with Chairman Gardip with the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. Very important members of our community, and we're always looking for ways of which we can strengthen and help make sure that we're serving the needs of all of our students. And so we had a tremendous meeting, and I'm looking forward to the work that we have going forward there. So that gives you a little bit about the last few days of your superintendent. It's been tremendous, and I think our schools are really off to a great start. So I'll leave it at that.
Well, that's wonderful, and I like to thank, I speak for everyone, when I say that I'm so excited that you have had your first of hopefully many, many, many first days of school here with the Washoe County School District Superintendent Joe Ernst. All right, and that closes Section 4 and brings us now to Section 5, our closing items. And we will welcome up our members of the public for the opening of Item 5.01, our public comment.
Kate Flehft.
Hi, is that Kate? Yes, oh, hi Kate, welcome, welcome. Thanks for being with us today.
Hi, I want to thank the members of the board and the superintendent for allowing me to comment today and for their potential support of a dual-language coordinator position in the district. I'm the mother of a sixth-grade dual-language student and a former board member of the Dual-Language Action Committee at Jesse Beck Elementary School. As a part of my comment, I would like to add to the already positive portrait of a student that we've seen today. I'm going to add the portrait of my son, Oliver. When Oliver entered kindergarten at Jesse Beck, he, in the dual-language program, he didn't speak a word of Spanish, but he was welcomed not only by the group of wonderful teachers, but by his fellow students, some of which didn't speak any English at all. As my son does not come from a bilingual household, his ability to communicate with his friends and their families in Spanish can be attributed to the strengths of the dual-language education that he has received and the friendships he developed along the way. One of the secondary benefits of dual-language education is that many of our teachers come from other countries, and therefore they're able to share their cultures with the students. And as such, my son has gained a great appreciation for geography and cultures from around the world. Last year, when Oliver was completing his time at Jesse Beck, he applied for and was accepted at Mount Rose for middle school. And while we were excited and appreciate the opportunity for him to continue his education in two languages, not all of his students, ah, sorry, his friends were accepted to attend. As Mount Rose is the sole option for dual-language education for middle school in the district, there are limited spaces for students, but they do have a positive energy for and advocacy for education there, which is encouraging for the future of dual-language education in the district. While I appreciate the current attention to dual-language education by the district, I would like to emphasize that it is long overdue. Dual-language education began in the district about 16 years ago, meaning that the students that entered the program the first few years are now graduating college. And the district still does not support a K-12 pathway to education for all of the dual-language students. As has been indicated here today, there are multiple ways to support expansion, but I believe that the voices around this conversation should be multicultural and not only in English, but in Spanish and other languages of interest within the community. If open to families of multiple languages, we can reach not only the students who benefit from the program and as enrichment opportunity such as my son.
Thank you so much, Kate, we appreciate it. Thank you for being with us.
Teresa Anstel.
Hi, welcome Teresa, thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Teresa Anstel, and I'm a mom of two students, one of whom attends Desert Skies Middle School. I come before the board representing a group of families who are in the walk zone. We request our trustee, Colleen Westlake, have the board add to a future agenda, a reevaluation of the walk zone for our area of the Highland Ranch subdivision. I have spoken with leaders of the district, Adam Circe and Chris Mulhern, to request an exception be made to have my student bust. My request has been denied. Some of the statements that were made, I found troubling. One, that the public sidewalk is safe. Two, unfortunately, we have to draw the boundary somewhere. Three, we have to pick a line and it's two miles. And lastly, if we make an exception for you, we have to make an exception for everyone. So here I am, publicly speaking on behalf of a number of people in my neighborhood. The first attitude I'd like to address is this line has to be drawn somewhere. This statement is an example of a closed mindset, of black-or-white thinking, and all-or-nothing attitude. Emotionally, it felt like someone was saying to me, "Too bad, so sad, you bought a house one-tenth of a mile too close to the school." A school that wasn't even built in 2005 when we bought our home. I was a former licensed substitute teacher for the district for four years, and I saw firsthand the time and energy and money the district puts into developing curriculum that will teach our kids to have a growth mindset. I believe it reasonable to expect our district and community leaders to have that same level of a growth mindset, a solution-oriented attitude, not a throw-up-your-hands-and-shrug-your-shoulders, it is what it is. The second statement, that Highland Ranch Road is safe because of a sidewalk, is fairly distorted point-of-view. And here is why. I've walked the road many times, and I did a little science experiment on Sunday afternoon, and I walked it again, and I counted 249 vehicles passing me in 45 minutes on a Sunday afternoon. The sheer volume of traffic makes this a dangerous road for any pedestrian, and you'll see two more examples in my handout of why the road is dangerous. I'm also curious if it had occurred to anyone that this safe public sidewalk is in fact on the wrong side of the street 50% of the time? Because if we remember from our driver's ed, Rules of the Road, pedestrians should walk facing the traffic. So on the way home, our students are walking with their back to 250-plus vehicles. In conclusion, I'd like to revisit this area, and I will gladly volunteer to be on the Safety Solution-Orientated Committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here, Teresa.
Elizabeth Kenny.
Welcome, Elizabeth, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, thank you, it's nice to be here. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Kenny. I drove here from Oakland, California today to be here. My granddaughter goes to Spanish Springs High School here in Washoe County. My granddaughter has informed me that a male is undressing in front of the girls', in the girls' locker room in front of the girls, because he identifies as a female. He also gets a front-row seat to view naked females. Every parent should have been notified that the male is invading the girls' locker room, irrespective of any law that permits. My granddaughter doesn't want to dress in front of him, nor does she want to see him undressing. Gender identity doesn't trump immutable sex. His belief doesn't make him a girl, and it's actually brutally unkind for anyone to affirm that he can be a girl because it's not possible, regardless of taking hormones or undergoing surgeries. The school told me that my granddaughter could get dressed somewhere else if she was uncomfortable. This is backwards. You are placing males' desires above a female's needs, and I choose those words carefully, desire versus need. The male with the gender confusion should change elsewhere. He is one, the girls are many. Moreover, gender dysphoria, that is a rejection of biological sex, is a mental health issue according to the American Psychiatric Association. The school, like so many other brave schools in the state, need to stand up for truth, biological truth, and protect sex category, which is undeniably immutable. If this board is afraid of being sued for right and moral, for right and moral doing, protecting your female students who can be harmed by a boy, don't be. There are law firms ready to take your case. You really should be more afraid of the parents and grandparents, and of course, the harms to see these girls who you are erasing by claiming that a boy can just say he's a girl and magically get treated as one. There are currently seven lawsuits against student districts, and the parents and moral teachers are winning. Parents are tired and not staying silent. Look at me, I drove three hours to be here. You know and I know that females need to be protected from males, not the other way around. If you want to know more about these law firms, please reach out to me. In the meantime, I have more information right here, what this transgender movement is all about. Be bold, be brave, and do the right thing. Get the male out of the female's spaces. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Elizabeth, we appreciate it.
Travis Kenny.
Welcome Travis, thank you for being with us.
Welcome, good afternoon. I too traveled 300 miles because I'm concerned about this issue in my goddaughter's school. While I don't live in Nevada, my roots in Nevada go back five generations, and it's scary to see this happening in Nevada. In the state of Nevada, a minor cannot walk into a casino and put a nickel into a slot machine. A minor cannot have a sip of alcohol, that's good. But in Washoe County schools right now, a minor male can change in the locker room in front of minor females. This is not okay. This is concerning, and I respectfully ask the board here to make some changes. I have nothing against transgender individuals or people that are confused about their gender and can make special accommodations for them. But you cannot make the vast majority of normal, well-adjusted females feel bad or pressured to go into this situation. My biggest problem is they were using psychological force by making the girls feel like they were the outcasts if they didn't want to go into the locker room with boys. This is wrong. We need to respect, but we need to be rational here. We need to deal with this problem where it doesn't hurt the girls, it doesn't hurt women's sports. My goddaughter doesn't want to be in this class because of this single issue. She wants to participate in sports. She wants the rights that females are supposed to have under Title IX. And again, I'm respectfully asking the board to make accommodations for the majority, not the exception. If I can't get anywhere with the board here, I'm going to go to the governor, and I have a message for Joe Lombardo. Letting boys into girls' locker rooms is not the Nevada way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Travis, we appreciate you being here.
Cheyenne Kenny.
Hi, Cheyenne, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for listening. Today, I drove up all the way from UC Berkeley in California to talk about the fact that Washoe County School District in Nevada is requiring females to share locker rooms, private spaces, with males. My niece attends Spanish Springs High School, and she informed me of this. She also told me that she was completely uncomfortable with a male being in a women's private space. We have learned from a teacher at that school that Washoe County School District does not allow schools to inform parents that their daughters have to share a dressing space with a male. It seems that school districts do whatever they can to brush off the concerns and input of parents, so I'd like to offer another perspective, and that's the perspective of Gen Z. Young women and girls do not want men to be in our safe spaces. We do not want men to expose themselves in front of us. We do not want men to be able to watch us get undressed. Women deserve to have the protected spaces which we fought so hard for in the 20th century. I can tell you that the majority of these girls do not want to be subjected to this, but old, out-of-touch politicians will try to claim otherwise. If you don't stop promoting a perverse ideology at the expense of women, they will start asking to be homeschooled and senior paychecks will be cut in half. I sincerely hope that this boy has told the truth, that his biological, immutable sex was not a mistake, and that there's nothing wrong with who he is. Until people are brave enough to tell the truth, we must prioritize the safety of women over the feelings of men. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Cheyenne. And the thanks always go to our public commenters. It's always nice when you say thank you to us, but I do want to remind you that public comment is your right, and it's our responsibility to listen.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Roger Edwards for the record, longtime 50-year resident of Washoe County, and I'm telling you, I am so tickled today. We spent half of this meeting talking about how successful multi-track education was at Mount Rose. I'm amazed, I am totally amazed. I can't get up here and say that we're not talking about quality of education today. I'm just dazzled. Only one hiccup, there's always a but, right? But we didn't talk about how this board is going to take all of that learning from those two schools and spread it out into the whole system. You had the people here in front of you that made it work at those two schools, and you could have asked them, "How do we spread this? How does that work for the rest of the district?" These folks made it work, you know? So what are you going to do? You're going to put it back on the schedule and bring them back in, or what? I mean, you had them all right here. Anyway, I've just got a bit, I am pleased that we're talking about quality of education finally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards.
And by the way, you can't hear me if you don't speak from the microphone, right? The other people, you can hear me, but the folks behind cannot, especially when you have these lovely, young people that sit back here and talk about how much they're doing whatever they're doing, and then out of the microphone.
Thank you.
I sold death people back here, need the microphone.
Of course, it's always a good reminder. We'll definitely make sure to lean into the microphone so everybody can hear. Thank you so much.
Tara Thornton.
Welcome Tara, thank you for being with us.
Hello, Tara Thornton, I'm co-founder of Freedom Angels. We're a human and civil rights group, working at the local, state, and federal level to protect children, families, and freedom. And to the point of the family discussing the situation in the Sparks School. If the gender identity issue hasn't come to your board yet, it's here now, and it's in every town and county. in every town and county and every state across the nation. And to give you an idea of the terrain that we're facing, a few months ago, I spoke to an eleventh and twelfth grade class in California, and one of the topics came up was this issue. And after the multi-hour presentation and debate, a bunch of the kids stayed with me after and wanted to talk about how they had noted that in the last four years, suddenly they were under extreme pressure to affirm gender identity and to the point that from their classwork to their, any interactions at school, nothing but full acceptance of this agenda was allowed. And I will tell you, these kids love and care about their classmates. They want to see them supported no matter who they are, but what they were really concerned about, they said, "We're okay. We don't like it, we're looking forward to be out, you know, in college and beyond." But what they were worried about were their little brothers and sisters and the kids younger, seven, eight, nine, ten, because they're seeing them come to them and have questions about gender identity that they themselves never had. And one thing we need to be really clear about, and it was touched on in the speech by Elizabeth Kenny, is that gender identity and sexual orientation are different things and they are also different than immutable sex. And what we have right now is a generation and a growing, like the iceberg hasn't even been seen yet, of children that are facing gender dysphoria and experiencing gender dysphoria, which is a mental health condition, at an enormously growing rate. These children, I want to bring some solutions. These children, if they're not already under a 504 plan, they qualify for it. Anything that creates an interference with a major life activity allows for reasonable accommodation for them. The same goes though for, let's say, the girls in a girls bathroom or a locker room. They also qualify for accommodation under a 504 plan. So what we're going to have is a landscape of competing 504 accommodations for children because we need to support them all, and the best plan is to look at making, just like you have wheelchair accessibles, start to make third options for bathrooms, changing rooms, and then larger community sports.
Thank you very much Tara, we appreciate it.
Erin Massengale.
Hi Taylor, oh wait, are you one of our students?
Yes.
Yes, welcome, don't you worry, you take your time, we won't start the time until you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I go to Spanish Springs High School and as you've heard, there is a biological male changing in our female locker rooms. Even though this is a touchy subject, I would like to raise my concerns and opinion on being asked to change in a locker room with a boy without my parents being notified. Girls in women's locker rooms have been designed exclusively for people who have female bodies and for good reasons. Those reasons include biological differences between women and men, women's rights to privacy and protection from potential male violence against women. Everyone regardless of their gender identity deserves to feel safe and respected in private spaces such as locker rooms. Many girls feel uncomfortable in locker rooms under any circumstances, but especially when they have to share this space with someone who is biologically different from them at birth. The discomfort experienced by female students should not be overlooked or undermined. As females, we are taught to respect our bodies and to speak up and that it is okay to speak up. This is me speaking up for myself and all of the other girls who will be finding alternative changing arrangements. It is not okay to put a female and a male child in a room together and expect us to feel comfortable undressing in front of each other. No matter how accepting I or any other person can be of transgender individuals, there is still a major difference in our natural bodies, and I believe in my heart that telling girls to dress out with a boy and then making them feel like they're excluding somebody or discriminating by speaking up, by saying they're uncomfortable, cannot be written, oh, I'm sorry. By doing that, you are teaching children silence. This issue cannot be written off as purely policy when there is so much more happening within the minds of students, parents, and all parties affected. From what has been explained to me, the policy allows the biological male student into the biological women's room and does not allow for teachers to speak on the issue or notify parents. It also encourages a mindset of staying quiet if a delicate subject is making you uncomfortable. Not speaking up for your own emotions and body to spare the feelings of another individual is not right. In the year 2024, I would have imagined we had come farther enough to respecting women's rights to their bodies, opinions, and voice. These negative thought processes are being encouraged and is teaching our next generation of mothers, grandmothers, and aunts to ignore and say nothing when a subject might affect other people poorly. Thank you.
Thank you Taylor, you did a really good job sharing with us.
Savannah Verdek.
Hi Savannah, welcome.
My name is Savannah Verdek, I'm a junior at Spanish Springs High School, and today I wanted to address the issue of whether trans women should be allowed in the women's high school bathroom or locker rooms. This is a topic that invokes many strong feelings and I want to highlight some of the concerns that have been raised. Nevada Crime Status states that in 2023, Washoe County School District property had twenty-four arrests, twenty-four arrests for reported violent crimes in which included crimes, criminal homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault compared to the 2022 reports, a seventy-one percent increase in one year. Of twenty-four arrests, twenty of the arrestees fell between the ages of ten and seventeen years old, and twenty-one of the twenty-four offenders were genetically male. There was enough evidence provided by the alleged crimes that Washoe Schools felt the need to detain an individual on campus. While these statistics do not specify location on campus or gender identity, twenty-four arrests from reported crimes are enough to show us that trans women should not be allowed in high school women's locker rooms. As a female who is required 4A grade to change in a high school women's locker room, I would like to offer some of my own concerns which are echoed amongst my peers. First off, privacy and safety concerns. One of the main arguments against allowing trans women in a women's locker room is centered around privacy. Many individuals, particularly young women, feel vulnerable in such a situation, in such settings. They argue that sharing a locker room with someone who is biologically a male can be intrusive and make them uncomfortable. This concerns about privacy is significant as locker rooms are an intimate space where individuals expect a certain level of confidentiality and safety. Furthermore, we need to protect the mental well-being of all students. High school is a formative time when students are grappling with their identity and self-image. The addition of trans women in a women's locker room can lead to confusion or anxiety amongst females who may feel in a situation that doesn't align with their understanding of gender. This awkwardness can impact their mental well-being and lead to a less supportive environment for their development. In conclusion, while advocating for the exclusion of trans women in these spaces, we should also emphasize the importance of finding compromises. That respects all of the individuals. Alternatives can be created such as a private changing area or a separate space that ensures comfort and privacy on everyone. This is a complex issue that deserves thoughtful discussion as we seek solutions and prioritize the safety and dignity of all involved. People have the right to live their lives, nobody has the right to impose on others. While others may change their identity, this does not negate the gender they were born or the, but the freedom that you have to be you is the same freedom for me to be free from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much Savannah. All right everyone, thank you very much.
The Board received emails from Kathy Daly and Rachel Stapina.
All right. Thank you all so much for our public commenters, we appreciate you being with us. That closes Item 5.01, and now for Item 5.02, our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September tenth, 2024. And then Item 5.03, adjournment of this meeting at 4:08 PM. Thank you all so much.